You didn't want to plug it, did you?
I feel like you were dead. Your whole day was.
So, Seth?
You are.
So, it's six o'clock in Lee, New Hampshire. It's November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And first quarter of business is the financial planning tool. So, one thing we have to go through. I don't know if you want to scoot.
Yeah, yeah, scoot.
Scoot. You'll pick up the lights?
Me? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, so what's our, what, Chris, I says our goal tonight? I think our goal is to go through and see what we can move and what.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I've put in here. We're looking at version ten, draft version ten. And it's for review by select board. I've also noted there's one significant change in the spreadsheet. We've had a problem in the past with the hyperlinks to supporting documentation. When they were put in as hyperlinks and when you moved the spreadsheet to another folder, the hyperlinks would not correct themselves. So, if you looked at it on a different computer, it wouldn't find the files that you were looking for. So, doing hyperlinks in a new way, using the hyperlink function. So, there's a place on the beginning of your balance worksheet where you can put in right here, what is the path to the folder which has all the cost estimates in it? And that way, you can move this to any other place. And if you change that, then all the hyperlink functions which have formulas in them will come and get this as the path to the folder.
Okay, also, can you, I don't know if you've done this already. Can you sit down with Andy and show him what it is to move and tweak things? Not necessarily the programming part, but to update numbers and stuff like that?
I can play with the version that China sent me a little bit.
Just so he's comfortable with.
Sure. Yeah, I'm willing to do that with anybody that wants to.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, that's my change. And part of that is here you can see, I haven't, I have not updated all of the links. So, when I updated a link, I put it in this strange green background, which is not normal for hyperlink. But you'll see that there's some others where I haven't updated them. So, those are.
That's positive, though. It's green.
It's, yeah, it's green. That means that's good.
False positive.
And the hyperlink formula up here. This part, accrued benefits history, that's what the user would put in for whatever the file name is. And that gets appended to the, what was put in previous for the path to the folder. And then this is the abbreviation that shows up. And the other change on hyperlinks is instead of having a user have to write a formula for a new hyperlink, all of the places for links will have a formula already put in. And it's a formula that goes to a sort of dummy sheet. And it calls up something that says, oh, sorry. I'm just sharing a window. But it calls up a page that just says, "Cost estimate is not available or link has not been updated to point to cost estimate." Right now, I'm sharing a window because my screen is a sixteen by ten. The projector's a sixteen by nine. And if I share the whole screen, then it shrinks it in order to fit the height. That's what I have for sort of intro. And it's up to the select board is what you want to look at. We can go through each one in turn or whatever you wish.
The thing that you shared with the ABC is looking like the current, two thousand and twenty-seven calculated is at one point one million. So, I think we need to reduce that.
Okay, so, so this is what's currently there, eight seventy-two.
Oh, that's changed.
The first thing that went to the, first thing that went to the ABC.
Yep.
Had a library at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Yep.
With the entire library project to be paid out of the reserve fund. And the library since has edited that with a hundred and thirty-something thousand to come from the foundation. Thirty-five thousand, I think it was, to come from their savings accounts. Twenty thousand from a grant that they received. And twenty thousand that they've decided, of the total project, they decided not to do.
Okay.
So, that greatly reduced that million dollars.
Okay.
So, right now, it's at eight seventy-two, which is still larger than any appropriation we've ever had to trust and reserve funds.
That's three hundred thousand. At least in terms of on the budget itself, they're requesting six hundred thousand extra. And then from the calculations you sent, I put in two point five percent for across the board. That's about eighty thousand. So, that's one point two seven million. So, unless you want to have the tax rate go up like thirty percent, I think we need to do some culling. And then this is one place to start. Thanks for that, Daniel.
That's something that department heads were expecting, I think.
So, how about if we go through each one of them?
Sure.
And see if there's things we can change?
So, accrued benefits, this fifteen thousand dollars from two thousand and twenty-three was based on historical average. And it's something that you can change. There's forty-three thousand, actually, about forty-four thousand was in there at the beginning of the year. And right now, it sets so that the, it will always maintain a margin at the end of the year of at least ten thousand dollars. Those margins are not cumulative, but that means that if you're expecting to spend twenty-three thousand, it will keep a margin on that of at least ten percent of that. I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars.
And that sheet that you gave us, Andy, the liability is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand?
That's total if everybody.
It just left.
Right.
Do we have any idea of who might be leaving anytime in the near future and what we owe them?
I think the probably, I'm thinking there are three individuals that have talked about retirement. Warren Hatch, and I don't know that he's planning on leaving this year or next year. He will be old enough certainly next year to do that. And the fire chief is thinking eighteen months. And the police chief waivers in and out. And those are, the police chief and the fire chief are your two biggest hitters there.
Do we have any idea how much we owe them?
We do. It was in the sheet that I sent. I, it's not a huge amount. We have no contracted employees, so the obligations are simply vacation, which is limited, sick days, which are limited.
No, I don't think I have.
Okay, I know, but right here, I can open it up.
Fire chief and the police chief leave in the same year, you're probably looking at about twenty thousand dollars total. I mean, Warren was in the, I'm going to say seven thousand dollar range. So, we have a cap on what you can take for vacation time or what you can take for sick time.
And note, this is one of the items that this voters did not vote for, did not approve.
Was funded last year.
So, it may need some better explanation of what it does because it's not something you can skip.
So, how about if we, the calculated deposit, twenty-three to sixteen, how about if we reduce that?
It was twenty thousand and the voter said no. But that may be understanding of what is the function.
Well, I guess you can knock some off. I think we got to do a little bit here and there. They'll add up over time, that's for sure. You know, at this point, I don't see the police chief going off. Fire chief said he would, but it's still going to be a year or so out at this point.
Yeah, that's twenty twenty-seven, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't, I mean, I don't, if no one goes out in twenty twenty-six and we change the estimated cost in twenty twenty-six to zero, that changes the math a lot. I don't think, if no one's leaving anytime soon, there's a reason to keep. I don't, why do you think we find no one from this year? Can we find no one from last year?
I think you said it to everybody, right?
Yes.
I think you did.
Sure you did. Just trying to find it.
It was a little happy though. It's a little.
And the only, I mean, the big hits are the fire chief, the police chief, and the department heads. And Denise's is a significant amount below the department heads just because she's been here for fourteen years.
But she's not saying to go anywhere.
No, she isn't.
So, why don't we reduce the annual cost?
For this current year?
Yeah, let's reduce it. Let's go, I don't know, what's your thoughts? Maybe fifteen?
I was going to say fifteen.
Oh, it's fifteen right now, but, you know.
Okay, so, we're making it a fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-six estimate. So, we're saying this is what we think it is for this year. And then when we put in whatever number you want, that's what it will put out.
So, for twenty-six, how about if we go with ten thousand? It's not going to be very much, but like you said, every little bit, so.
Maybe a little bit helps. Let's go with ten.
Yep.
I agree.
That's the cost. So, in terms of what we're calculating the deposit, let's change that too.
That's, the purpose of this override here is you decide.
So, let's override it to ten.
Mm-hmm.
And that will give us thirty-two thousand. That should be more than sufficient. Oh, what changed?
Well, it recalculates what's needed for future years.
Oh.
But all of that is based on being able to pay this, what was two thousand and twenty-three estimate of fifteen thousand dollars every year for the next twenty years. And this, this fifteen thousand, I can go to share screen if you want. And then bring up this.
Will we pay the previous years?
So, this is previous years. This escalation of three point six seven percent comes from back in two thousand and twenty. I asked the finance officer, how have salary, total salary and wages for the town grown over the last ten years? And that was the growth over the ten years. So, that would account for both increase in the number of personnel and increases in pay rates. And that's where this three point six seven percent comes from. And this is the history going back to two thousand and seven. And you can see it has varied.
So, all over the place.
All over the place. It's from zero to fifty-seven thousand.
We also changed the policy, so that's not, that's not.
Correct.
Possible for that to happen again.
Yeah, you need, you need to look at.
Like, seven people left.
Yes, that's right.
That's correct.
So, I don't know that this is the right thing we're basing it on. Like, we have this accrual worksheet. Do we under, do we have, like, what is the maximum they can actually accrue? So, there's got to be a cap on these numbers.
Two hundred and forty. There is, there's two hundred and forty vacation hours and I'm drawing a blank on the sick hours.
So, like, some of these guys are completely tapped out. I'm guessing it's forty because that seems to be what everybody has. And then we pay them out of their current rate for our gross pay. And I, I don't think.
Yeah.
The logic here is.
Well, how about if we change the estimated cost from fifteen thousand for the subsequent years to ten?
Okay. So, those are this, this year's estimate. And they're all going to be ten thousand. In this year's dollars.
Okay. Closer to ten? All right. You comfortable with this one? You want to talk about it a little more?
No, no, it's fine.
You want your final?
Yeah.
All right, so let's go to the next one, please. And they still don't know how much that's going to cost, right?
They still don't know how much that's going to cost. Peter thought that they might have a better idea because there's a private cemetery where they are having to buy individual pieces and put them together to make what they need. And he thought maybe by today, he would have a better handle on that, but I haven't heard from him.
Okay. Well, let's skip this one for now. Maybe we can get back with him before we make a decision.
So, fire equipment, here's where there's some that I have not updated, these links, like that one right there.
And my plan with it, the thing that's pushing it is the tanker number one, line number ten. I believe it's one point six million. That seemed to be what's driving this whole one.
And so, if you look at.
It's out there a little ways.
Where does it change?
SCBA's.
And right here is the last one, this is two hundred and eighty-four. And yes, that's engine one.
And there's one further back this way, though. It's one point six million.
Yeah, keep going the other way.
Excel line twenty-two.
There you go.
Yeah. But that's, I mean, that's part of it. But it's actually the cumulative all the way to that engine one.
Chris, an engine one, that's, okay, please tell me which one we just replaced.
Two.
Two.
We just replaced two.
Two.
Okay.
Engine two is right here at eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand for this year.
Okay, and that, that removed rescue one, which is why that's now zeroed out.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so another year, we would then take this line out.
And the thing going forward, at least, I think it needs more research, but I think maybe if they stick with just these four companies that do this to the turnaround times like four years, I think maybe we try for a demo the next time as well.
I totally agree. And hopefully, the other aspect is if this relationship grows between the tri-towns, there might be some opportunity. Thinking positively at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
The fire chief told me that engine two, the one that's being replaced, was also a demo model.
So, we might be able to knock that down by fifty thousand at this point.
In terms of the amount being deposited?
Yeah. And we think that'll probably be a starting point anyways.
Yeah. So, what's that? It's gray. Oh, two eighty-four?
Two eighty-four. And a piece of that is, because also this radio infrastructure, this is new this year. The radio infrastructure had been voted by, approved by the voters a couple of years ago at eighty thousand dollars. And that plan didn't work out. This two hundred and thirty-three thousand is for the cost of putting in a tower here at the public safety complex, along with all the equipment that goes with it.
So, the eighty thousand elapsed, right?
No, if, if.
Did we?
It was voted by the select board to consider it as encumbered for one additional year.
One additional year.
So, that's this year right now, two thousand and twenty-six.
All right, and what's he going to do with the eighty thousand? You know?
Nothing. It's not going to be.
So, it's going to lapse.
Yeah.
So, yes, because you can't, you can only extend it for one year.
I don't see that.
But that's, that eighty thousand is not listed in here. This is the replacement for it because the previous plan proved impractical. Apparently, it was difficult getting things set up. In the meantime, they're planning on putting repeaters on individual pieces of equipment. It's not an ideal solution because you can't have multiple repeaters on site all turned on. So, you have to manage them at the fire, apparently. But it's something that could be done in the short term. And he's still asking for this repeater tower. And apparently, there's also some advantage to the highway department if we had this.
So, the six seventy-four, nine oh eight, that includes the eighty thousand?
Can I change six seventy?
Balance on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, I assume?
Oh, yes, that is, that is what was in the fund.
Okay.
The full amount that was in the fund. And two hundred and fifty thousand was added. So, currently in the fund, there is the six seventy-five plus two fifty plus interest.
Okay. John, you'd like to reduce it by fifty thousand?
Yeah.
So, let's drop that to two thirty-something?
Two thirty-four already.
Well.
Let's, let's make it two thirty.
Yeah, that's a reasonable number.
Yeah, and the, the tower plan for the radio infrastructure is very similar to what Barrington has just completed.
Okay, all right.
Chief has basically been meeting with them.
Yeah, they seem to have the same problem we have. There's certain parts of town you just can't get to.
Yeah. Well, Barrington extends all the way to the Northwood line about a half a mile from the Northwood Hennefords. So, they've got a huge distance all the way over North Lake.
Okay, all right.
A lot of town to be considered in the sense of, you know, they're probably thinking, well, you just purchased a truck. Even though they don't know what truck it is or why you choose at this point. We're planning for it, but I think at this point, it's a little bit easier to swallow than two hundred and fifty.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Highway, please?
Do we know about, Andy, about one through five here? Are these really going to need to be done this year? Or if any of them are getting pushed out or could be pushed out?
Well, the ninety-seventh's happening.
The ninety-seventh, you're having, can you make line number one?
Three.
Great, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's paying our part of those two trucks.
We already did that, oh, right there.
Yeah. And we get these other ones?
Front end loader, reattachment.
Well, that also looks great.
So, the current loader will go to the transfer station and the new one will go to highway? That's the plan, I think.
It's a good plan. We have three new trucks in highway as of this year, the two dump trucks and then.
The dump?
Small dump.
Okay.
And we have a relatively new skid steer, too. That was two years ago.
So, the pickup truck, the loader hasn't been done yet, right? Even if we moved it out to two thousand and twenty-seven, it's not going to change things too much.
All over.
Yeah, the line number two.
Line number two.
Correct. So, so if you look at the calculated deposits, sixty-three thousand, and it stays sixty-three thousand.
For what?
Quite ways out. And that tells you that moving any of these around, the only effect is going to be, what is the difference between the cost escalation and the interest that we earn on deposits?
Which is.
So, which is almost insignificant.
Work with, is there?
No, it changes a high percent or two.
Not much to work with.
The only thing that I would suggest in terms of deposit overrides, we make it even to like maybe sixty-three thousand?
That's one of the principal purposes for an override.
Yeah, so, let's make that sixty-three. Not that it's going to change a whole bunch of stuff, but, all right. Anything else in here? No, land acquisition? I don't think there's anything.
Nothing.
There's nothing there.
Yep.
Library capital reserve fund.
Back up a little bit. Land acquisition. Have we heard anything about, what's his name?
Bankses? No.
They supposedly had a meeting last week with Selfie Land Trust. An initial thing, I guess, from Don Jeans was that they most likely will not ask for anything from the town, but that's not official yet, so.
In any case, there would be deposits planned.
Yeah, okay.
Library capital reserve fund, there's nothing planned to come out of it. And it has less than seven thousand dollars in it. Library building, these first two items, I think, are actually just leftover from previous, two years ago, and are just sitting there with, it's saying that these are coming from other sources. Said the town was paying for it, but I don't think either of these are things that are actually happening.
Or the building addition?
The building addition, they've said it's not planned. So, that's why it's Xed out. The amount that's listed here is what it was previous.
So, what is driving this?
So, what's actually coming out of this fund?
So, the library accessibility improvements, that's the vestibule that you saw last week. And initially, that was listed as one item with all of it to come from the fund. But it was listed as happening over two years, this could be your two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven. In order to make it work in the worksheet, if it's over two years, you have to divide it up. And when I pointed that out and also that there could be other sources of funding, it came back as eight pieces. Three of them happening in two thousand and twenty-six with three different sources of funding. Some money from the fund, some coming from the grant that they received, and some coming from the Lee Library Community Center Foundation, the Library Foundation. It's LF. And then five line items for two thousand and twenty-seven. Again, this is all just one project, but five line items for two thousand and twenty-seven. And I'm guessing that maybe this is just because this is the way it was listed in a cost estimate. But a couple of them to come from the fund, another sixty-five thousand to come from the foundation. This thirty-seven thousand was to come from their savings account. And the last twenty thousand, they decided not to fund. And then future, this is, this is where there was another change from when it first came out. Initially, they were estimating seventy-five thousand dollars for this outdoor programming space. And when they made updates, it came back at fifty thousand. And that's to come from the fund. And then parking lot improvements, which they had previously listed two years ago at twenty thousand dollars, they asked that that become a town expense. So, I just said that it's considered as part of town center site work. There's a few hundred thousand dollars in town center site work listed on town buildings that's not funded. So, twenty thousand can easily disappear in that. The energy improvements they still have listed is coming from the fund. And then the roof replacement, they asked that that be paid for by out of town buildings. So, that right now is listed in town buildings. But there's no savings being done for it because it's not until two thousand and fifty-four. The roof is just replaced in two thousand and twenty-four.
Can we go back up to the two thousand and twenty-seven ones from the fund? So, those have the escalator on them automatically there. But you're saying you think they come, came from a cost estimate. So, should those really have an, the increase on them? Because isn't the person already planning for it to be in the future? Imagine?
Well, this adds up to the two seventy-five, which was the estimate that they presented to you.
The estimated cost or the ones with the increase? That's the maximum?
No, the, the, two seventy-five is put in here as being a two thousand and twenty-six cost.
Right. I'm just not sure that is a two thousand and twenty-six number. I think that the architect's already assuming when he's going to be building it, so I can't. Do we need that?
Well, this is, this is just an architect's educated estimate.
So, we don't have real numbers for that anyways?
No, this is, this is not a quote at all.
Not much to do there, is there?
Well, it's also requests.
It's not our
Yeah.
They can do whatever they want with that. All right, moving on.
They can do whatever they want with it, as long as we put in twenty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars.
Well, no, I mean, what I'm saying is they are the one that writes the warrant article. We can decide what we want right now, what we think should be in there, but they're the ones that make that decision. So there's no point in talking about it.
More articles for this.
They move on.
Yeah, let's Sam dashed you, but
They're allowed to play whatever they want, so.
So this first item is one that the select board approved with an estimated cost of ten thousand. I think it was five to ten thousand. I haven't heard what it actually cost. And then the rest are estimates for installing systems. These estimates have not changed in many, many years.
Did we can ask Scott about these, see if they're still valid or if these are still on the list for things that he thinks need to be done in two thousand thirty?
He did review this, and he said he did not want to make any changes to these, so.
Maybe we make that one twenty or twenty-five?
How much was it last year?
Twenty-five thousand.
I love if we do that again. Next, recreation.
So recreation only has two items that I entered at the last, I think it was ABC meeting. There was a lot of talk about a building at Little River Park, so I just added that as a line item. There was absolutely no discussion about costs, what it might cost. And then the select board member brought up the playground net pyramid at Little River Park. And
Which aren't cheap.
Which are not cheap. And when my wife is when my wife is there, she took a picture of the condition of the ropes and the metal cables. And the rope covering is worn off by many of them.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about Chelsea.
So
So can we ask you to ask them to look into replacing that because that becomes a liability, doesn't it?
Sure. Believe it does. I think there are some others floating around. Okay, that's proposal.
And we just left in there, thirty-nine, yeah, so we have money. Ages to expand on wreck, I don't remember.
Uh, no. There is no Asian listed.
Okay, so if they can give us that information so we can put a warrant article in to at least get that replaced? I'm not sure about the building, but
Yeah, that's
That's a project that's
It's friendship, and it's something else.
All right.
Next. And the next one is the one that they shot down.
Yeah.
That's a choice. They don't, let's just not reality. I'm aware of that, so I'm sorry to hear the sarcasm dripping from my voice.
No, I didn't hear any dripping at all, but I'm behind it, so.
Um, okay.
Yeah, that got forty-nine point six percent. So it was close.
Do we have any idea what we're looking at for a cost? I know you said you got some bids, did you read them?
The last of them, I don't believe we have enough funding to completely cover the rebuild.
Okay.
And you're supposed to open when?
This evening, I think four o'clock was the date.
Oh, in terms of funding, okay.
This fifty thousand that's there is from the previous bids that were requested. And we received four. One much higher than fifty, one much lower, and two of them were within a couple hundred dollars of fifty thousand. And that's from fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
So in terms of withdrawals, you're fifty-eight thousand?
If you take the fifty thousand from twenty twenty-two and move it forward to twenty twenty-six, fifty-eight thousand.
Can we tweak the controls? You've got ten percent and fifteen thousand. I don't know if you need to leave those at that particular high level.
This is up for the select board to decide.
Because it's set for fifteen, right? Or is it? Am I looking at that wrong? It looks like it says fifteen, but over here it says required end of year margin is five thousand.
That's the limit.
So what's the fifteen?
So the fifteen is the upper limit. What this does is it calculates a margin of ten percent.
Yep.
But not less than five thousand and not more than fifteen.
Okay.
I take that back, my last comment, when I'm looking at the actual fund balance, we should be okay.
Okay, but it'll affect this number, like, if the withdrawal is going to be almost seventy thousand dollars, it's going to affect the future and what we need for it.
I think that's quite a deal.
Okay, let me skip this one then until we open those bids and see how bad that's going to come out. Come out at any point.
This one scares me.
The big thing here and the big unknown, of course, is cost of bridges replacement. This is our public works director estimate of what he's seen. And this is the town's twenty percent. So this is saying two and a half million dollars per bridge.
And the procedure is the town pays for it and then the state pays us back. So we have to have two and a half million dollars. What is it, what is it, four and five? In two thousand thirty, we're going to have five million dollars, it looks like. And we have to have, you know, that's going to happen.
Right, and these years, as I understand it, are when it might be nice to do it. But it also depends on when the state says yes.
Yeah, if they have money.
Correct, correct.
Or if you have a hundred-year flood.
And it takes out the bridge?
We gained four bridges that we had on a chart similar to this in Deerfield because of the two thousand seventeen flood.
And the thing is, if you flood, most likely your neighbors are flooding, which means the state doesn't have enough money to do all the bridges, so.
There's definitely an issue here of how do you pay for that two and a half million dollars? How does it end up dividing over one or more fiscal years? And that's something that or if it has to do with what do you keep for fund balance and what can the treasurer do?
Well, it's a risk game, isn't it?
What is the first one is Tupperell? That's a pipe. That's not a bridge.
That's right, so you could probably whack off thirty-three thousand pretty easy. Take it down to two hundred thousand.
You're rounding.
You're rounding. Yeah.
Last year, the appropriation was one hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It passed at sixty-one point eight percent.
Well, you can put another hundred thousand, see what happens.
So you want to change it from two thirty-three down to a hundred?
Yep. I think we've got to be aggressive, I'm sorry to say, but you got to cut somewhere.
But, okay, but what does that mean for the, what thing are you going to cut in the future? Like, it's, we can cut it now, but it's still, those are going to come due or we're not going to pay them.
Well, it doesn't mean these things need to be replaced at those times.
That's true.
That's true.
I understand that, but moving it out a year or two doesn't really change the math all that much.
Well, let's see what it does. Can you move line number three out, like, two thousand twenty?
Just one here? So two thirty-three nine eighty-two. Two thirty-four one forty-five. It goes up. And it goes up because real quality cost increase is estimated to be one percent above inflation. And one percent above inflation pushes it to a little bit more than what we're probably earning right now. Especially when you figure that deposits do not actually go in on July first. And the money doesn't stay there until June thirtieth.
But if it's a pipe, do they still pay twenty percent? It's not a bridge.
You're talking about this one?
Number three.
On the three.
Because that's not a bridge.
My understanding is they do.
They do the same thing with the pipe, yeah?
Yeah, and we're involved in a similar project in my hometown, that's the
Okay, fair enough. But to replace a pipe is not going to be two point five million dollars. It's going to be a lot less.
It's very similar to the Chelsea
Chelsea Road.
Project, that was essentially a pipe too with support underneath.
Do you have any more information about number three, John, in terms of documentation or anything like that, or?
Uh, no, I don't.
All right, can we ask?
Public Works Director is the one to ask.
Andy, can you ask Steve about number three?
Yeah.
If it's a pipe, what's the total cost and what are we what would we have to pay? Because I think that one's high, but that's just me. So do you want to change the two thirty-three or two thirty-four to a hundred, or you want?
I think we should come back to it when we get more information on that pipe.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Anything else in this one? All right, solar.
And Lou did contact me. He unfortunately has a family event and is away for several days, since I will be here tonight.
All right, so the minimum buyout is the one forty-five?
One forty-five, one eighty-five is written into the contract. And the buyout price will be the greater of that price in the contract or the appraised value.
Which solar arrays are going down, I think, they're not going up.
They have been going down.
Yeah, so I would say this is what we'd be looking at, so one forty-five.
Right now, it's fixed ten percent with a margin with a minimum of zero and a max of twenty thousand. What was put in last year was thirty-five thousand. If thirty-five thousand was put in for the next two years, and if interest is what I expect it to be, then that would be enough to give you just a four point four percent margin. This ten percent came from the revision representative when she was here. And she was asked, since that's the minimum, what should we be putting in as a margin for that? And ten percent was her number.
Is that how we get the fourteen thousand nine fifty-four?
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-nine?
Yes. I think that it would be prudent to be keeping track of what do similar projects cost over the years. And also, if the appraisal that comes in from the owner is something the town disagrees with, the town has thirty days and which you can say, will we see a problem with this? And then in that case, a separate appraiser is hired. The cost of that is split between the owner and the town. So that might be another thing to find out is who does that and what is the cost?
I can call Mr. San Souci, ask him what you would charge. He's the go-to third party.
Okay.
Can we tweak the two thousand twenty-seven number down to like thirty-five thousand? Make it up to two thousand twenty-eight? So we know exactly what it is?
Yeah, I think it would be prudent to know, to have the history, since this was put in, what do similar projects cost to put in? And what would it cost today if you were putting in one like that? Or next year or the year after?
Solar panels are going down in price, but the thing that's most expensive is the converters. They have limited life.
Yes, yes, they do.
Built-in obsolescence.
Someone's asking a question here.
Oh.
But I was going to say, the inverters, in the proposal, the inverters had a twenty-year warranty. When this was discussed with the representative, she was sure that what was purchased was not twenty-year warranty, but instead it was twelve.
You have a question?
Are they doing a cost approach to value or is it a market approach to value?
I don't
That I don't know.
Because with solar, it would be very, you're right, so the cost of solar is going down. But if it's a market approach to value where the rates of electricity have gone up, that project will be worth more today than it was before it was put in.
All right, well, let's look at it, you're going to call them in a minute, so.
Here we go.
All right. Anything else in here?
Well, let's make it, so yeah, we have the thirty-five, no, I have no comments.
All right, town buildings? The well's still at fifty? Thought it was more.
I haven't heard that it's more, but
All right, all right, that was more. I don't believe it's going to be more in time with Steve and DES and Don Ida, we spoke with.
I haven't heard anything from Steve since they sent that information out yesterday. That is something that I think the select board should weigh in on.
Well, it sounds like it should be a hundred and twenty-five.
That's my opinion. When Steve first looked at it, Public Works Director, he was looking at what does the well need to service now? Because that's what he's responsible for.
Yeah.
And when the number he came up with is the needs now only call for a seventy-five-foot radius on the sanitary protective area.
Did you, I don't remember, did you send that to the other two select board members? I don't remember.
He only sent it to you.
Could you send it to them too, so they can? Because I think that's one of the things that Steve's going to grapple with, because I think based on future potential usage, it should be a hundred and twenty-five foot setback, which means a hundred and twenty-five feet circle around.
Yes.
So like if we were to put in a new town office building in terms of growth and stuff. But yeah, if you could send that to them, Steve's got it too, so. Anything else in here?
What are we actually funding on this, besides the town center?
Not much.
Right, so I'm asking.
So I put in red here all the town center projects that are xed out and grouped them all together. And then starting here in two thousand twenty-six. There are some items that Steve just said, oh, maybe he can't justify this. And this was highway spreader hangers. The highway spreaders get hung up so that a truck can drive in and you pick the spreader out of the back of the truck. And he doesn't have enough of those for all of the spreaders. But if he did that, that saves time because it's much easier just to back the truck underneath and drop the spreader into it.
So what is driving this? Is it the number ten? Okay, so where is the traction?
Well, that's something funded.
Oh, it is, oh, yeah.
Everything stays the same up to two thousand forty-three. And by two thousand forty-three, we have a public safety complex, the fire department bay ventilation system replacement. Boilers for highway annex, a boiler for town hall.
So we're driving, it's the things that are way, way out that are driving.
It's the cumulative of getting to that all the way out there. There are other big items here. New this year is the public safety complex boilers, the ones in this building. He did not have a good handle on when they would expect to replace them. The one, apparently the ones that are in this building are not the original.
No, they've been replaced.
But he didn't know the replace, at the time he was doing this, he didn't know the replacement date of them. And another big one is replacing the fire pump at the recycle center. This was planned for earlier, but the pump tests that they've been doing have not shown it degrading. So he pushed this out a little further. So he pushed this out a little further.
Okay. And the thought process, and I think you weren't here Rebecca, I think, when John and I were talking with Mr. Benson, but the number plan is for not this town meeting, but the one afterwards to do something for a town office building? That's still, or is still like planned?
Okay. I should also have an estimate on the present office building we're in before that timeframe too.
Okay.
Why don't we say twenty thousand then for possible deposit test? If it's twenty-one?
What was done last year was a hundred thousand and it came out of fund balance.
Yep.
You know, you're in twenty forty.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, we're out there, that deposit's gonna go. I gotta wait a long time to deposit that money.
How about here?
I agree with here, alright.
Okay. Treasure station? Alright, so how old is number one? How old is that compact? Is it forty years old yet?
Says it's two thousand three.
Oh, but we bought it used, pretty sure.
Yeah, I think it's, my understanding from Mr. Hoyt is that it's much older than two thousand three.
Cause I'm pretty sure we bought it used.
Accessory built.
Close to forty.
Yep, rebuilt, yeah. So if Mr. Banks passes away.
We're out of parks.
We're out of parks. We're kind of like, we're stuck, so. I assume number three is so they can clean off the transfer station without the hybrid department's help?
Uh, no, this snow blower is now Xed out.
Okay, sorry.
It was in here when there was a plan for a sidewalk to go along Mast Road. And the issue is, so how do they keep the sidewalk cleared in the winter? And that's what this item was specifically for, but since the sidewalk now isn't being cleaned?
No, it was, the last estimate we had was on order of one point one million dollars for a three hundred yard sidewalks.
Okay, so, so, that, that's why Steve Xed this out.
Goodbye, everyone, and town treadmills.
So assuming number seven is what's driving this whole thing then, John?
Uh, is it jumping? Yes.
And he's got an estimate for this or not?
It's his market research, looking at what they cost.
Okay.
Well, personally, I'd like to drop the hundred and thirty-one thousand down to something else.
So last year, it was gonna be ninety thousand. And Steve voluntarily said, reduce it to forty-five. So the voters approved forty-five by sixty-three percent.
So drop it to fifty thousand. It's going fifty.
Well, Steve, that takes us, but go ahead.
Yeah.
And that says next year you need two sixteen.
Or.
Or.
Or, 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 yeah.
Or this gets pushed out.
Or we get a better estimate?
Yes.
Now, someplace here you've got a thing that tells us what all those deposits are? I don't remember what tab it is.
Oh, you mean with the tolls so far?
Yeah, in terms of.
Seven fifteen, eight thirty.
Where is it?
Three thirty.
Seven fifty-five. We reduced it by what? It was eight, what, sixty-four? Eight something.
So the, the other items that are on here are pushed out around quite a ways.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred and forty-five thousand? Hundred and forty-five, yeah.
Not many other places to whack about.
Well, we don't need some of these things, at this point it's not pushing them out, it's removing them. I don't know what any of these things are though, so.
Like, for instance?
I don't know what any of them are.
As you've observed, it says baler in twenty twenty-eight. That's the big item that is driving the cost, that's why after twenty twenty-eight, it drops down to seventy-three thousand. So if that baler was not needed in twenty twenty-eight and was pushed out further, you would have, you know, another year or two to accumulate the funds for that. So if this was made twenty twenty-nine, now instead of having to make up the remainder of it in one year, you've got two years to do it at a hundred and sixteen thousand.
And that's a new baler, right?
Yes. No, that's a used, that's also used.
Okay, alright. They know they're expensive.
Damn right, they're expensive. Everything's expensive.
Alright, you good with all this?
Yeah, I mean, there are a couple that we have to come back to, unless we get answered questions, but.
So maybe we can do this again next Monday?
Yes.
But just look at those couple?
Yeah, you can see where they are. Roads and bridges and.
Accretment and now necroben, it's the reevaluation.
Yep.
So there you go, twenty twenty-six.
So twenty twenty-seven is now down to seven sixteen. Which is less than it was two years ago and three years ago.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. John.
And do we have the tax setting stuff?
We do not.
Yeah.
We do not.
You gotta be kidding me.
I am hoping to have the ability to do that tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Okay.
Tomorrow or conceivably Wednesday, but I'm hoping that she's gonna give me numbers tomorrow.
She has to have a meeting.
Right.
We have to have a meeting and we can schedule an emergency meeting for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I mean, worst case scenario, we can do it Monday night at the, at the regularly scheduled meeting, but I'm just thinking there's, if I can get numbers on her tomorrow, I would love to. Not that I would love to be back in this room after hours, but.
So what are your two availabilities for the next two days?
Thursday's good.
Thursday's good. Alright.
Wednesday's bad.
Okay. So why don't, what are you, what's yours?
I, I mean, yeah, Wednesday's not great, if I, if I came here on Wednesday, there would be two small children with me, so.
Well, we'll, we'll entertain them if you have cupcakes with you.
I see, I could do tomorrow or Thursday's fine, if it was quick.
It should be quick, wow.
Do you have any?
Let me, I'm going back to the office tonight, noon to five thirty-five, and hopefully still catch Grand Cat.
She gonna be there at seven o'clock, isn't she?
She sent me a message at nine thirteen last night.
Do we know why it's seven o'clock? Don't we usually do this much sooner? Am I missing?
Well, unfortunately, we, we didn't do it a lot for the last two years, but we got kicked to the curb a little bit because of our special meeting. That involves extra work and doubling up and.
It was also the payment. You up to it and whatever?
That was sort of a minor glitch at the end here, but, and for whatever reason, um, our rep has been, I'm not sure of personal reasons or what, has been out of the office for considerable amount of time this fall.
And also from that form, particular form, our fund balance is down to one point six million dollars.
We're not gonna have a lot of fund balance.
Yep, and we have a policy that says we don't drop below one point five. So basically, almost nothing's gonna go into it.
We've got no breathing space this time.
So.
You actually set the policy so you can.
Oh, I understand that, but we set it for, well, at least.
For good reasons.
We set it for good reasons, because.
It's something that's run by percentages, right?
Uh, we, well, as you know, the fund balance is not all cash.
Yeah, I know.
So that's the problem, so we said, this looks like a comfortable number. If we drop below it, then we're gonna have to start looking at what we do to fund things.
I think Ben was explaining that it's, it's not as solid, it's kind of liquid.
Sort of like a checkbook.
It is like a checkbook.
With the checks right there. So I don't think we're gonna spend too, too much time in terms of what we're doing in terms of setting in the undersigned fund balance against tax rate.
But it is not getting it.
So I think it's basically, okay, that looks good, Andy, let's sign the form and off you go.
She'll give me the range. I just need her to activate the form so I can show it to you.
Won't she go and do that like right this minute? Well, she's sitting over there, can she push the button? Like, what's the problem?
He has to put in that form, so.
No, she does not wanna activate it right this minute, got it.
So how about if we schedule six P M. on Thursday?
I can also do Tuesday if I have to.
Tuesday as in tomorrow.
Tuesday, tomorrow?
Yeah.
If I can, you know, get her to agree tomorrow morning that we can have a rate by Tuesday evening, I will definitely let you out.
Okay.
I'll contact you.
Essentially. Tuesday?
Tuesday and Thursday.
For Tuesday.
And my, my family will be very excited.
Your parents would, to be here.
Very exciting.
Well, your daughter was very nice last time.
No, she won't be here, I'm, my husband will be like, that's great, I'm glad you have another weekend.
I'm gonna push for Tuesday, if that doesn't work, we'll plan on Thursday.
At six?
Yeah. Six, if you get here. Earlier, it's making a difference to me, it's.
I can chat and see if I can be realistic, so I can, or can you be here?
Uh, I have a meeting here at seven, so.
So no, you don't wanna be here, so six.
Leave it at six.
Alright, fun.
Six, anything else?
I don't.
Need this known public or that month?
I don't, no, I will save that for Monday.
Okay, alright, sounds good. I move to adjourn?
Second?
Any, no, no discussion? All those speakers, say aye?
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that a bad number?
It's not.
I like.
Like, I don't have to cry and worry about it for the next.